The board is now reconvened to open meeting, may have a certification in a closed meeting.
Whereas the Acton County School Board has convened a closed meeting after this state pursues an affirmative record vote and in accordance with provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and whereas Section 2.1-37, 71D of Virginia requires a certification by this school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore being resolved that Acton County School Board hereby certifies that through the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which a closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Motion in a second to certify the closed meeting, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. May I ask the clerk for roll call?
Mr. President?
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 Mr. Neal?
Here.
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 President?
Mr. Neal?
Mr. Lawrence?
You're president.
We all stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize Vanessa Johnson here with the Board of Supervisors, welcome. Thank you for coming, and I'd like to ask everyone to please silence your cellphone if you have not already done so. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approved the minutes from 5:06, 2025 meeting.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve the vouchers?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approved the vouchers as presented.
Second. Thank you. Motion in a second to approve the vouchers, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion on case 4.03, the readmission?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approve the readmission case 05, 2025, 01.
Second. Motion in a second on the readmission, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there a motion on the long-term suspension, 02?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approve as amended for case 05, 2025, 02.
Second. Motion in a second on the long-term suspension, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh no, did we? Is that everything on my list?
Madam Chair, I'm moved that we approve the personnel list as presented.
Second. Motion in a second on the personnel, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm standing.
Motion passes. The GED list, is there a motion on the GED list? Okay. Okay. Next on the agenda is student recognition, Special Olympics.
I checked, none of the principals are here with any students that attended. One last call, was anybody here on behalf of their school for the Special Olympics event? We did it at the last meeting, now there's some people looking puzzled, we gave another opportunity for people to be recognized. Thank you. Mr. O'Shea.
Good evening again, it's an honor and privilege, you guys know how we brag about our SkillsUSA success over the years, this year is no different. We've had some success at the district and state level, and I have one of my instructors, Mr. Dale Spilker, who teaches welding, one and two at Arcadia, he's going to talk about our students. Mr. Spilker.
My name is Masanupbuk. That's an interesting spelling, but that's okay. How's everybody today? So thanks for letting me come up here and speak. I'm here to recognize an exceptional group of students who have recently demonstrated outstanding skill, determination, professionalism as normal in the fields of automotive technology and welding. These students competed in rigorous district and state level competitions where they and advancing to national competitions as well, where they showcased technical expertise, critical thinking skills, problem solving skills, and exceptional work ethic. In automotive technology, we have Mr. Tanner Binder, he was district champion, he also moved on to the state competition. We have Tyson Turner that was second place in the district. We have Peyton Pruitt that got fourth place in design, and she's a junior, so she'll probably end up competing in that next year as well, and her design was awesome, it was probably one of the best ones that I've seen in Virginia, I'm surprised she did not win that. In welding, we have Mr. Austin Werke, and this is just a list of his accomplishments throughout class. So project manufacturing, he's the regional champion, he's going to be advancing in two weeks, we just got our itinerary, to compete at Ferris State University in Michigan for the national maritime competition. He's competed in the American Welding Society Delmarva Chapter, he won that, first place in that. Mr. Conway Turner, they're all sitting over here, Mr. Conway Turner, SkillsUSA, district first place, SkillsUSA state second place, and of course the American Welding Society competition second place. And then Mr. Jacob Brewer, SkillsUSA state competition, welding sculpture first place, so he advances on to the national competition as well. So I'd like to, you know, have these guys stand up, and you know, if you guys, everyone in here could give an applause for them. So I thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'd also like to mention that Jacob did bring his sculpture, if you guys would like to check it out, he did a sculpture of an Astic Lighthouse. So if you guys would like to give him a few minutes just to, you know, show you guys on one of the tables.
Please. Can Jacob stand up real quick? Mr. Spilker. Hi. Joe, you're being too busy.
Thanks. Did it okay? I'm going to come to the mic to talk about it. So this was, like he said, was part of the SkillsUSA competition, this was held at Wollenhof, Virginia. This took me a total of 169 hours, it is fully posable, so the whole thing opens up as well as the top light moving. This has been an astonishingly, it's been very insightful, and I've learned a lot through it. It's definitely not something that I came into welding thinking that I was going to do, but I'm very happy that I got the opportunity to do it. And it's not something that people can usually say they're dumb, and it's definitely not the first thing you think of whenever you think of welding, but it's got great artistic opportunities to it, and not only that, but the business opportunities of it are incredible. So I'm just going to bring this around, if you all would like to pass it around, it opens up and you can take a quick look at it.
Just do not drop it because they cannot change from now until the national event.
Very nice.
So everything here? Yes. The stairs themselves took about a week, and it is completely made out of miler and stainless steel. Each process has to be documented, and I have a binder, he has that now, that documents every hour and every day I spent on it, and what each day consisted of. A lot of this was used from the funding that has been supported to the Badger Program.
Could you be sketchy with the tall one?
Yes, yes, if you look in the back of that, you can see the sign of it all. I got you.
Does that weigh about?
Uh, why not? But it's about here.
It can't be over...
I'd say it's about 20 pounds.
100.
It can't be what?
We're not allowed to be over 100, so it's definitely under that. It's kind of funny enough that competition requirements, how tall could it be, 18 inches?
Uh, well, it's 18 inches maximum.
And we're at 17 and 7 eighths.
Yeah, so we're on 1 eighth's less than we can be.
Mr. O'Neal, I'd like to give you kudos on your library things, you still do it for parents, you do an excellent job at A-C-P-S, and even make sure that they go on to the next level once they graduate, so kudos to them.
Thank you. Mr. Spilker is a graduate of Acton County Public Schools, he's graduated from the safety team, and he was a member of our Badger Program, I think we discussed that fast, but...
Very nice. Congratulations to all of you all, very, that's wonderful.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a first reading of a policy for staff leave, if you have any questions through now and the next meeting, please contact the appropriate staff person. Next up is our financial report, Ms. Owen.
Good evening. I've, I'm sorry, I've submitted my report, does anybody have any questions? What I told you about on that last line, the S3 allocation, Virginia has completed their filing of the appeal to the National Department of Ed, so we're just waiting for what Virginia has told us, and we're included in their claim.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Mr. Bennett with the Safety Committee.
I'm just going to give a brief update, and then I'm going to let Della, you're still here somewhere, right? Safety Committee, we meet about every other month, now we're trying to meet more often, and some of the board members know, some of the board members are on the committee, Dr. Johnson, Mr. Neal, but it's made up of principals, this county nurse, Acton County Sheriff's Department, and Della, myself, Jack Bowden, Chris Reader, we've got about representation from all, you know, throughout the county schools and the outside of county. We've had discussions recently about the vape sensors, and the vape sensors have worked really well until the schools, kids got knowledge of where they're at, so now the vape doesn't happen in the back room anymore, they're vaping wherever they can find, there's no sensor, so we're trying to figure out a creative way to curb that. More to come on that. We had one demonstration of a weapons detection system, Mr. White also sent us some information from Pavion, I've reached out to them, they're going to do a demonstration and give some pricing. A lot of counties are going to weapon detection over metal detectors, a lot of people are using them in conjunction with one another, we just need to kind of figure it out. The first one that we had to demo on, none of us were real impressed, the weapon actually had to be brandished before the weapon, before this thing would pick it up, so not real impressed in technology there. So there's a lot of new AI stuff coming out, we're going to stay on top of it, I'm hopeful we can find one that we think is good for our county, and you know, see grant funds to put it in place, because everything looking at right now, I don't know if it's Della, somebody sent an email this morning about weapons detection, where a school system is putting a new system in place, and it was $2.7 million, so it's, the price tag's over high, they integrate a lot of camera systems, but we've been looking at that, and we'll continue looking at it. The one we looked at was zero eyes, we weren't impressed. Metal detectors, we're in this process of getting more people trained, we're going to get all the security officers trained with the Garrett training, and hopefully when we start school in the fall, everybody's up to speed on these metal detectors, we can have the flow coming into the schools run a lot smoother, we still have some hiccups nearly every day, but it's a process, and I commend all the schools and the principals because I mean, they're doing the best job they can do, getting kids in and out of school, in school with these things, it's just, it's a lot of people coming to schools at a quick pace, and some of our problems are at the elementary level, those children, you know, want to run through right behind one another, so we're struggling there, but I think we'll make some headway. We're looking into different ways to come back, getting things through the metal detectors, and hopefully that, you know, with additional training and a new method of bag searches, and potentially, Della will talk further about a potential new type of bag that we'll use. We're looking at doing an active trainer shooting, Bobby Taylor, Lieutenant Acton County Sheriff's Department is working with us, and we're going to try to set something up once the teachers return, and have an active shooting training, we want to do one on the south end of the county and one on the north end, try to get everybody involved in, where everybody goes through that training just to, just to know what to do in the event. So we're hoping to get that coordinated. Recently, Chris Reader is on the committee, he brought some bus driver concerns to us and kind of addressing that, been a rough couple of weeks for him, but thankfully nobody's been seriously injured. At this point, I will turn it over to Della for her part of us.
Any questions from Mr. Bennett?
Why is the demo for the one... Pavion, the one you sent? Yes. They haven't set a date up yet? Because they were at BSBA, and trust me, you can send about 20 people in there and it will pick up. For real? Yeah, and it continues, so, and it's mobile, that was helped, so it's mobile. Right, yeah, they said where, you know, what they were telling me to be inside, you can move it outside for sporting events and different things, so I'm pretty excited to get their demo and see what it's like. Everything I've ran on it and everything, it looks like it's very good, I'll just have to see what it looks like and what the price looks like.
Hello, everyone, good evening. I don't know how much Mr. Bennett has shared with you all, but how much WBOC has shared with everybody before we could put this out to the community first. As is probably mentioned, the Safety Committee met, and we had recommended the clear backpacks for the upcoming school year. The provisions I have, the document that's up there is not the one that I have since updated that I will post to show some of the bags that will be accepted and the bags that will not be acceptable if we were to get this passed for this evening. The intention of this new protocol is twofold, fewer bags or clear bags would expedite the safety checks in the morning, and it would help the school security officers and staff identify items which are not allowed in schools. This decision was not taken lightly, and it was made in the best interest of students and staff. In addition, metal and hard plastic beverage containers will no longer be permitted in the building, students will only be permitted to bring clear plastic disposable water bottles to school either sealed or empty. You know, most of our schools do provide filtered water for them, so if we're going to be clear, we're going to be clear, so it's going to be, will be clear on being clear this school year. The items that will be permitted and for the students to carry will be posted where the parents can see to start getting a jump on, try to purchase these items, this is not something, in an effort, is not where we will purchase them, we do not want the large, traditional solid colored backpacks and backpacks and totes, they will not be no longer allowed. So if students have to have a bag, we would like it to be clear, and clear means clear, no color clear, everything has to be clear. In the effort to do that, and the younger students will only be permitted to bring one bag to school then for elementary students, and that's also be clear on being clear, if they come with bags, this does not minimize doing safety checks. So even though the backpacks will be clear, it would help to expedite hopefully the safety checks and the bag checks in the morning, but if students come in with an additional bag, any bag that they do bring in will still be checked. So this is just another safety measure where they can kind of get a glance on, you're coming towards me, I could kind of look and see what you may have already before you get there, it takes up the more time that we have. Our secondary students with extracurricular activities, they will have designated areas by their, their assigned administrators to know where to put their, say, their sports bags, when they come in and they will be checked. So those items, we're taking into consideration, our students who do extracurricular activities and having to bring other items into the building. We will also have the, what I call the question and answer section would be up there as noted, and there will be pictures attached. They also have bags that have names on them, so for parents that feel, well, my child won't be able to have like the bag, they have some that's umbrow, I've seen them, people have already started looking, so it's creativity, but they have to still be clear, we don't want any drawings, no markings on them, if they're going to be meshed, they can't be meshed out all the way, but again, those will be on the, this level that I have now if the initiative is passed. So again, this is just another safety measure that the Safety Committee, when we met and we discussed and kind of came to this conclusion to present this for us to get started with it for next school year. Okay? Yes.
Question.
Yes.
So a teacher reached out to me about these, the plastic disposable water bottles, is this what you're...
Yes.
So kids can't bring plastic clear water bottles to the school, can't bring this?
So about, I would think that, we kind of think it is a clear water bottles like that, like if you have a name brand water, but just no more of the stylish containers that they bring in now. So we want clear water bottles, whatever water brand that they may bring, sealed.
Like a sports bottle kind of thing, like for soccer or sports, that kind of thing?
Because we want them to be sealed, because they can come in with anything, if they come in with any other thing outside.
If they come empty, I mean, that's the biggest thing as long as you've got it empty, right?
Or if they had a clear water bottle, if that was filled with water, you'd be okay with that, because it was all still sealed, yeah, so that's...
But if it's a bottle that's clear and has nothing in it, whatever, that should be the one, right?
To be able to get the water, I guess that would be because it's clear, because we want water.
You can prove it that way, I mean...
Well, at times they've been used as weapons. So as long as it's not, as long as it's a soft one, it's not like...
Not seen on metal cars. And then another question was the filter water available in schools, the question was, there's not enough of those stations in the school to have a thousand kids lined up to try to fill the water bottles in there, so how do you want to address that?
So if they bring their own water bottles like that, that's fine for parents, I don't, we're not saying we want everybody to pack their kids with water, because in theory, we're not meant to build those kids don't drink as much water as they coming in there with. So we're going to have enough water in the building for the kids that's really drinking water all day, that's bringing these stylish containers to the building just because it's a trend.
Can we find out how many water stations any school has, whatever, just in case it's not an issue, because I know this school here doesn't have a lot of...
How many water stations yet?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just got a question. So just going back on these, one of Mr. Bennett, if they do improve this one system that does all this security, y'all revisit this situation, these bare bags?
Well, I think if we do, depends on how soon we get moving with that, then we can revisit it, but we wanted this to be, if it was going to be approved now, so our parents can start looking and shopping and having discussions about it, if it gets approved tonight, this part, and if we had to come back and revisit, everything's always something we can revisit.
One last thing, I know the board ain't going to write this back, it's, I mean, I've seen these clear bags, and like I say, it's not gorge, I'm telling you, I'm letting you know now, you even see no boards with these bags, so they might have books old school in the arms.
Well, that's good, if we didn't have to have, if they had to have a bag, it would be this, if they could get back to carrying, because we carry them, I remember carrying my books, we remember, the girls would do it.
Women, the men.
And the boys would carry them like this, it started with the Fonz, they carry them, there's nothing wrong with carrying your books, the Fonz, it was cool. So people carried books when we went to school, backpacks were wack, I'm just saying, I'm telling my age, I'm sorry. So it won't hurt them to carry your books, the choice is yours.
I just have a suggestion, something that just bubbled up, when it comes to visiting schools, particularly from Maryland, and certainly other parts of the Commonwealth, you may want to consider some provision so far as whether the visiting teams, where we're going to store their backpacks, students do bring them all the time.
Sorry, I had a couple of things, so just like Mr. Whipper, I have questions on the water bottles, so you can bring in a store vault sealed one?
Sealed, sealed, yes.
Yeah, you can't take yours back home and reseal it, and you can bring in a clear one that's not hard plastic that you could personally...
Yes, no, just not hard plastic, clear.
And some other question is with the backpacks, so I'm not sure if all the children's backpacks are as heavy as my children's backpacks are, they seem to be about 50 pounds, I'm going to exaggerate a little bit, but they're very, very heavy, and I doubt that the plastic's going to hold up to that, and you know, I know we buy like reinforced backpacks because the backpacks are so heavy.
Right.
And I had several parents reach out to me with concerns about this. I don't know if they're going to check through the, if they're going to check them every day anyway, are we missing items in the way we're checking now?
I think the way things have gone, we have, and we have, and it's, I mean, any measure is going to be as much as we can, because like I said, when we looked at this, it was pros and cons to everything, like some kids, we're going to have to make sure, like they have folders and stuff in there, we're still going to be able to check, and it's not going to say you have a clear backpack, you won't be checked, it's just would help to expedite the process that we're doing, that's what we're just trying to do and see, and hey, who knows, if it doesn't work for next school year or something, everything is always to be, come back to revisit.
I saw those guys.
I think we're going to, we'll accept comments this meeting and next meeting, and then we'll vote.
Okay.
Thank you for the Safety Committee's recommendations.
Hello.
David?
All right, so as you can see up here, we have our updated for 2025, 2026 teacher salary scale, and this was, if you remember, when we were going through the budget cycle when Dr. Jett was here, and he showed you the graph of how we had a lag in the salary, and we needed to try to adjust to fix that, so this is not an across-the-board, you know, 3% or 5% or 6% raise, this has strategic raises throughout, if you recall, we had the Virginia average, and then we were adding 3%, so the beginning of the scale doesn't have as much of a raise as the end of the scale. I'll give you an example, at five years' experience, there's a 3.4% raise, but at 20 years' experience, there's an 8.9% raise, okay, compared to last year's. And then the highest portion is the folks that have 30 years' experience, that's a 13.5% raise, okay, so what, as you, our teachers who are here who are more seasoned, 20 to 30 years are going to see the highest benefit from this new salary scale, you can also see that we get away with some of the ranges, like everything has one scale now, it goes to 30, and that's where you top off, so we try to make it similar to the classified administrative scale that we have now, so we remain consistent. Have any questions about it?
Just what is the, what's the cost for this?
The cost was what was presented in the budget, I believe it's just over 2.1 million, I believe, so this is, this is the concept that we were discussing at our budget adoption, so this is just following through to have you all approve this salary, so scales with admission contracts, but the average raise is 8.7%, and the cost was approximately 2.1 million, it really, really is a big increase for our teachers.
Yep, the specialist as well? No, okay, the specialist scale, I can email that to you all, that was a lot simpler because we just did a 3% across-the-board specialist scale, so last year, if you were a specialist last year, this coming year, you're going to see a 3% raise like the other employees.
Madam Chair? It would have been helpful, just maybe, maybe just need to see that what their salary was before as to what it is now, but...
Well, the starting last year was 50 on the dot.
Yes.
Okay, and then it topped out at 34 plus years?
67, I bet?
67, I believe, it's, again, the... Okay, and then the, it topped out at thirty-four plus years.
Sixty-seven, I bet?
Sixty-seven, I believe. Um, it's, it's, it, again, the, trust me, I can, I can email you, all of you, what it was. But I, I have all the numbers here. Um, at fifteen years, it's a six point four percent raise. Uh, mentioned at twenty years, eight point nine, twenty-five years, ten point five. I mean, uh, like I said, the folks that are, have been with us the longest are gonna benefit the most from this new scale. And it's all, again, stuff that Dr. Jett went over with you, uh, again, making that, uh, you know, closing that gap in those years. It's all what we've, we've been discussing all along. Uh, it'll be a big, big boost to retention of teachers, especially teachers that have been with us for the longest time.
Jerry, why don't we, um, just table this until, um, to the next meeting, so we can have time to absorb this and email us the information? I'll second that.
Motion in a second.
No problem. We'll email you last year's scale and this proposed scale.
Yeah, and if we could see the before and the after.
Yeah, you can, you can look them right side by side, um, and you'll be able to see. I think this is much more streamlined, and it's gonna help us out and help the teachers out too.
It'll make some of the teachers very happy.
So is this part of the concurrent, uh, teacher contract, or?
Yeah, I'll need this to start doing contracts, I need this.
July one.
No, actually, before then.
We, we got hundreds of these to make, so, I mean, the sooner we get this approved, the sooner I can start issuing contracts to teachers. And, uh, yeah, we, ideally, we'd like to have contracts to teachers before the last day of school. So let's just, you know, uh, I'll, I'll email all information to everybody, and, um. And new, and people who were trying to recruit new hires. Right now, we're quoting them last year's salary, so if I had someone on the hook, so to speak, who had twenty years' experience, it'd be a much more attractive salary to offer them at this point.
I oppose the motion. You never called it. I have a motion in a second to, to, as to next meeting. All in favor?
I oppose.
No. Three days. Is that right? Name? Four days.
That was a.
A tie. It's always gonna be posted to the next meeting. Um. It's not here. School board member comments? Let's just find out.
Had the opportunity to go on a field trip with Chase Government School to Jamestown, and, uh, I wanted to, uh, compliment Mr. Merritt and Mr. Luck on how well they handle the class and handle all, like, a lot. Some other person gave the tour, it was a really good day to be there, it was nice to be there.
Just two things, um, I did share with the board, the county audit monthly meeting highlights. The board doesn't meet the next two months, so I'll continue to share highlights when the meetings resume. The other, only other thing is, just as a quick matter of interest, examiner, the one that made the motion about the beta transportation last time, and there was a contingency, and we're, we're thumbs up. Thumbs up for that.
Yes, we were, we were able to obtain a certificate of insurance that had the required minimum recommended by Bay Corp, and we have already sent the deposits and the contact information because they're different schedules, and we wanted somebody at the school level to be responsible for the schedules and not transportation.
I just wanted to say, um, that I have completed my background check as a school volunteer. I passed with one hundred percent on everything. Um, kind of tedious, so I really get it if parents are not forthcoming to get it done. But I did it because I wanted to be a role model and example. If you wanna do something for the school system, this is what you have to do. But it, it went, it went relatively quickly, um, the videos were relatively simple. I learned a lot that I didn't know, believe it or not, um, as far as our school system is concerned, but, um, it, it was good. It went well, and I'm done, so I'm ready to go.
Um, just a reminder for everybody, the retirement banquet is next Thursday, the twenty ninth at Nandoa. You can show up for our retirees, they appreciate that. And I was asked to share this, this is a school nutrition magazine, and we were featured in it. Brandon is blazing trails with his summer food nutrition program, so I have a few copies to share with you all. And, um, that's all for me.
I just like thank the, uh, well-known people coming, that's, that's, that was very nice. I mean, what he did and the time, just got him good look.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I'll be good tonight.
As far as background checks, once it's done, how long is that due for? Do you have to do it every year?
Yeah. I would totally, every year, I don't know.
It's currently not part of the policy, I was gonna, it'd be something I was gonna discuss with Dr. Miller. Um, you know, a lot can happen in a, in a year. Really need to sort of fall into that, maybe tweak the policy a little bit more, to maybe add how long it's with. So they're coming into policy to, to dictate that.
Thank you.
Rules for comment. One, identify a subject by name and nine-one-one address. Two, speakers are limited to three minutes. Three, individuals may reserve or transfer their time to another speaker. Four, specific personnel matters must not be initiated at a public meeting. Five, speakers cannot be abusive, threatening, or abuse profanity. Six, specify the nature of your remarks. Seven, speakers who have previously spoken on a subject for public comment should not be allowed to readdress the board during the same public comment period. Eight, specific questions should be resolved prior to the meeting by contacting the superintendent or the appropriate staff member. Nine, anyone who would like to present a PowerPoint presentation for public comment has to present the presentation twenty-four hours in advance for, for review by the staff for appropriateness. And ten, all questions shall be directed to the chairperson, who at her discretion solicits the response from the appropriate staff member.
Ellen Richardson.
Madam Chair. Members of the school board, uh, Ellen Richardson, Chinketick, Virginia. I think you all know me pretty well. I hope I can get through this in three minutes. Uh, it's been something on my mind for a long time. I have talked with a lot of board members, members of the school, um, system, and it's about a cemetery. That's on school property. Some of you may not know that. Um, excuse me. It is the Wilton family. And some of you are familiar with Hallie Wilton, and she was a very wealthy lady. When she passed away in sixty-five, there was a contribution of a hundred thousand dollars to the school. And as of now, every year, two, um, college, I mean, two school graduates get a, um, scholarship. I believe it's a thousand dollars apiece if they stay in school for four years, that would be four thousand dollars. I think the cap is four thousand. But the interest off of this hundred thousand dollars way back in the sixties, early seventies, is still going on. And each year, there's two graduates that receive a scholarship from that. The paper you see is the cemetery. It is a school property where the football field is. Um, the grass used to be cut by the school board back in seventy-eight, seventy-nine. My son worked for the janitor during the school year, or when the school was out. He was the last one, to my knowledge, that cut it. I knew there was a cemetery there, but I had never been on it. So, anyway, when I was elected to the school, to the council, two thousand, that was my job, the cemetery committee. So we started a volunteer, we started, um, accepting funds from people. We hired people to cut the grass on the cemetery. Um, several of us, or school board, I mean, school bus drivers, we went and cleaned that cemetery, it was so bad. Well, we're all getting over, and there's no money out there being donated now. So what I'd like to ask the school board is they will ask, or have their grass-cutting people to cut that cemetery. You can see the fenced-in area, that is what we cleared, but it is not clear now. So I, I would appreciate it if you would look into this and see that it can be done. Um, the town can only do so much, that's taxpayers' money. And this cemetery is on school property. And for the respect of that family and the lady that donated, the two, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars to the school, uh, I'd appreciate it if you'd look into it.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll definitely look into that. Someone rose? It was the last.
Terry, that's a two.
Hi.
Terry Rose, Stoney Creek Road, New Church, Virginia. I'm in Chinketick School District. Um, I've been here before, Madam Chair of Board, I'm sure you recognize my face and probably will see a lot more of me. Um, I have some questions that if someone can guide me and direct me into, you know, what the answer is. Um, I would like to know, is there a metric for administration slash staff, um, at the school level to respond to issues? Um, I understand that, you know, they need to be thorough, uh, but there's some dragging of the feet that goes on, especially when it's beneficial. And I would like to see something somewhere or know that it exists, that it's done expeditiously and that it's not intentional. Um, number two, uh, where is the policy for schools that deals with the third-party providers, um, i.e. the counselors? How do counselors talk to guidance counselors? You know, where, where is that set down? Is there a policy? Because if not, there needs to be one, because it's, it's not a clear thing. And when you have issues come up that should be known, but not known, it's a problem. Um, and number three, um, where is the policy that addresses the confidentiality for students talking with our onsite counselor, our guidance counselor? Is there such a policy, does it exist, where the counselor can't tell you what your student said? Um, you know, if something is going on? And, and what I'm addressing is, there's been an issue, it's been a known issue, and now it's trying to be pushed under the rug. Um, and I can deal with a lot of things, but don't look at me and tell me you didn't know, because that's upsetting. Um, so these are things that, if there are not policies in place, there should be. Because there's a lot of things that, communication's key with any child. And if there's no communication and a huge communication breakdown, then it's breaking down everywhere. And I would really like for somebody to look into it. Um, and I did leave my email, so if somebody could, you know, kind of direct me where that's at. Um, on a side note, with the, with the backpack, um, I can tell you, I have two children who would not be able to manage a backpack that couldn't, you know, be rolled, or, you know, whatever, because, you know, they, they just simply don't have that kind of dexterity. So, you know, that needs to be looked at, that if there is a rolling version of that, that's gonna be, be very beneficial. Um, but yeah, your attention to this, as always, is greatly appreciated, and I appreciate everything that everybody at the higher level has done for me, but can we fix the lower level, please? Thank you.
Have our central office staff look into those concerns. Thank you. Jason Campbell.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
Uh, Jason Campbell, your local dare officer. It has been a great year. Tomorrow, we finish out the program, our last graduation is here at Patonville Elementary School. Next Wednesday, the twenty-eighth, is our Dare Day celebration at Nandoa High School. Uh, where not just the public schools from Acuña County, but also from North Hampton County and several along Eastern Shore private schools are gonna come together and celebrate graduating the program. I would like to personally invite every one of you to come join us. It is from ten to two. Uh, if you show up, I have a T-shirt for you, we'll feed you. Uh, it's gonna be a great day. That's all I have to say. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Thank you for everything you do. Connie Burford.
Hello, um, Connie Burford, Chinketick, Virginia. I just have a couple things to say. Um, the first thing about the backpacks, I understand the need for the clear backpacks. We had people that are concerned about things being brought into school. Um, but the water bottles, I, you know, there's a lot of recycling, we need to recycle. We've had a recycle program, they had it at Nandoa for years. If you're gonna have all of this plastic coming into your schools, could you please try to encourage your schools to do the recycle program? So that we have a place to put all these plastic bottles and the styrofoam that they have in the cafeterias and all of that stuff. So if you could do that, that would be really great. And I'd like to say that the kindergarten class at Chinketick Elementary had a wonderful day on the Daisy Tours. They saw dolphins, they saw the ponies, they learned how the ponies get their numbers and how their numbers are given. And they had an absolute ball today on their little field trip. And I wanted to thank you all, or whoever in central office approved that. They all had their leg jackets, they just had a lovely, lovely time. And I would say that anybody that gets to go on a tour, big Daisy tours, because they were so knowledgeable and learned so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Von Knopf. Good evening, everybody. Couple things that I think are very important. Um, I've been saying this for a while, and I'm hoping that it will one day sink in, we can do better. I attended a meeting where there was a, knowing that already there's a lack of respect for fellow members on this board. There was a lack of respect for the judge. And if we have people on the board who cannot respect the judge, have mannerisms that are representative of being respectful, what do we respect, what do we expect here? And I was glad I was there to see it and to feel the atmosphere of it. We can do better than that. We have children, children had been there, but I have a child, they always say, you see how those people act? Don't you go through them like that. That's what I would've said. The other concern that I have, I attended a meeting two weeks ago, a business meeting of this board, and it appears that Roberts Rules of Order is my father. There was so much confusion in that board when a motion, when someone makes a motion, and you get ready to carry, you first ask for a question. That's what I thought. But no questions are asked until after it's been passed or disproved. That is wrong. And we're fumbling and blundering around like we don't know what we're doing. And it was very evident to me, we need to practice sometime before we come out in public. Like your mom used to tell you, make sure you wear clean underwear before you go out? Make sure you make a bed before you come home? Need to do some of that. And I guarantee you'll be a better board, you'll be more respected, because right now, the level of respect that I feel has even lowered. And I come here not to criticize, I, I listen to some of the things, some of the muddies and things that are being asked. You have a lot of things to go over. I wouldn't want to be on the board. You have a lot of things to take home, but you're showing in this meeting, and you're showing in the last two times that I've been with this board, were very responsible, and I didn't like it a bit. That's my opinion, and I believe it's the opinion of many other people. Thank you very much.
James Thurman.
Good evening, everyone, James Thurman, Keller Pond Road, King of Virginia. Um, I'm, I'm coming today to, to speak about a couple of things. First and foremost, I don't know if any of you all have been to the schools to actually see the school lunch. It is just not good. It is just not good. It is not good at all. And now we are going to put something else in, that children can't bring, water bottles and all this. I get the need for security, I get all of that. But our children aren't eating the school lunch. So last week, we had macaroni and cheese with crushed hot Cheetos on top and broccoli. That's unacceptable. What options do our kids have? If we're talking about feeding them because of food insecurities, that's not it. But then when children come to school with their money, they're buying hot Cheetos and Doritos because they're not eating the school lunch. The, the second thing is, when we talk about these backpacks, and I heard it mentioned that we were going to hear from parents. Well, I saw the notice about backpacks through WBOC like an hour and 15 minutes before this meeting started. And Judge Farishai has already ruled that information pertaining to these meetings must be timely. And if people have things to say, they should be given ample time to come and speak their piece, whether they want the backpack or not. But receiving that notice one hour before the meeting, it continues to feed into the reason why you all have lost both lawsuits previously. So we have to fix these issues if we really want to create the change. What's wrong with publicizing it with enough notice, that people can come and just be heard? I don't think that's asking too much. We have got to do what is best for this community. You cannot tell me that we're having these meetings where the same people are coming to speak their piece. At some point, we've got to want to create change. And yes, I do see some changes. Yes, I do. But at the expense of children, it's not enough. It's not enough. So educators are expected to do more each and every year. And then to not have a teacher scale when people have to decide on their livelihoods, and we just bump it to the next meeting. We bump it to the next meeting. When you know better, you gotta do better, and we are still in rough times. It's just not good, as a collective and as individuals.
Nicole Trees.
Nicole Trees, Airport Drive, Virginia. I'm gonna keep my comments, so I'll take my back to the Facebook later. But as far as these clear book bags, the thing that we didn't talk about, we didn't talk about females. Females carry different things than what males have here. I know that you said a while ago, they only allow one backpack. So is there gonna be a plan for females who needs to take their possible, can have items that they don't want to expose? I know you didn't say it a while ago, but I'm pretty sure that that's something that I hope you all take in consideration. So those are the things that I think if we have more parents with more notice, then people can express their concerns and stuff, because it's not really a one-size-fit-all, you know? And I know my grandson is in the fifth grade, his laptop and all his books, they are real heavy, like 50 pounds, and I'm not exaggerating. So I'm pretty sure that those plastic book bags, I don't know where you all, you know, they're not good quality book bags, so I hope you really take all that stuff in consideration. Thank you.
For folks listening at home, items appear on our agenda at least twice before they're voted on. And everything has been posted on this agenda since last week, including the clear backpack policy. Okay, next item, adjourned to close meeting.
Madam Chair, I do think this would be meaningful, for the purposes of, I, excuse me, four, four long-term suspensions, three expulsions, and one GED student, as well as a closed session to discuss the contract pursuant to a 2.2, that's 3711A29 regarding the school board retreat. And also the, the student matters, it is subdivision 8.2, subsection 2.2, that's 3711, Virginia.
Motion in a second, you want a closed session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Want a closed session? Thank you.